Okay, good evening and welcome. This is the April 5th, 2021 regularly scheduled school committee meeting. Call the meeting to order at 6:00 PM. This meeting is being held remotely in accordance with the Governor of Massachusetts' March 12th, 2020 order suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law. We have almost the full committee in attendance. Antonella Rochella, Sarah Trullio, Bill Fonteca, and myself Craig Thompson. And Beth will not be joining us this evening. We have our first order of business, which is approval of minutes. Do I have a motion, please?
Move to approve the minutes of March 22nd, 2021 regular session meeting.
Motion's been made by Bill. Second by Antonella. Discussion. Hearing none of the favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, nay. That motion carries four to zero. Thank you so much. Up next is our opportunity for visitors to address the committee. If you're in attendance in our Zoom meeting and you'd like to speak, now would be your opportunity to do so. And I'm not seeing any hands raised, so we will move right along. We have item number four, committee and subcommittee communications. Antonella, do you want to start yourself?
I don't have any questions.
Okay. Sarah?
Sure. I had the pleasure of stopping in at two out of the three elementary schools this morning and seeing students start to arrive back as both Cohort A and Cohort B rejoined. So it was a pleasure to see that and to see how patient everyone was and to be able to begin forward progress, even more further forward progress towards reopening our schools fully. So it was great to see folks this morning and appreciate that. So thank you.
Bill?
Yeah, the Meadowbrook Principal Search Committees met last Thursday, went over the questions, whittled down the candidates. We will conduct interviews this coming Wednesday and Thursday and forward candidates to the next round.
Excellent. Yeah, that's a good group part of that as well.
Yes, it is.
Happy to be part of that. Just want to acknowledge that we do have at least our K through five back in school. At least have the option to be in school full time. Seems to be somewhat of a turning point. So just wanted to acknowledge a little bit that we've been through with COVID, staff, families, community members. And just wanted to take just a moment to reflect on those that we've lost so far and throughout our community. So if we could just take a moment to just reflect on that. Okay, thank you. I just, I felt the need that it feels like a turn. We took a turn today for the better. And we'll have an update on that today, but certainly it's been a trying year for many folks. So, okay, moving right along, we have a discussion on local health data with Director of Public Health, who is not here tonight, but we do have our ELPS lead nurse and Dr. Greer, our counselor physician consultant. Dr. Clark, yes, thank you.
So if Ms. Lombard and Dr. Clark can raise their hands, we'll pull them in.
Yeah, I'm just trying to get the zoom.
Start us off, Courtney.
Sure. So at the beginning of each month, we've been working with our health advisory group. Dr. Greer, Clark, Ms. Kelly Lombard, our nurse leader, and usually we have our health director, Amy Petrosky. Unfortunately, she couldn't be with us tonight. So basically, as we move into, and this is Trullio and Mr. Thompson said this, expanding in-person learning this week where we're bringing in our elementary grades and starting to expand how many students are in each classroom and so forth. We just wanted to make sure that we continue to discuss local health data and what we're seeing. One of the things that we do hope will continue is the fact that we have not seen transmission happening throughout our schools. We have had positive cases, but the transmission seems to be happening out in the community, not necessarily in the schools. And so that's something we certainly want to have have continued. And so we, you know, we know that the masking, the hand hygiene, and physically distancing whenever and wherever possible are the strategies that seem to keep us in that successful mode.
Great. Dr. Clark, do you want to kind of give us an update, things you're seeing? Maybe some of the variants you're potentially seeing or changes in status from the last few weeks as we move to more in-person learning?
It seems like it's been pretty stable over the past few weeks. The numbers have stayed about the same. I couldn't tell you about the variants, the variants in Massachusetts and in our country overall. We don't test for them individually with each test. They test a certain percentage of the tests at the state level and we're never really notified as to which person actually has the disease, just the amount of it that they're seeing. So it's kind of presumptive how much is in the community. But they have seen all of them throughout our state, all the variants from the South African, one in England. I think there's one other one that I'm not recalling right at this time. But we're not going up in any high numbers, although we have a few more cases than we would have expected at this time, but I think it's fairly stable.
And what are you seeing for testing in terms of turnaround on testing? Has that pretty much stayed consistent? Is it readily available?
Yes, very available, very available. Turnaround time, 24 hours. Some cases, if you're getting tested very early in the morning, you could have a test result back by the late evening, so.
And still stop the spread sites you recommend, Eastfield Mall?
I think they're the easiest if you have the time to go sit. And even if you don't have the time, it's not that long. I don't think anybody's waiting, you know, two and three hours like they have been during the first outbreak that we had. So, but for pediatrics, sometimes you need to be scheduled. And for that, people should call their pediatrician.
And speaking of pediatrics, you know, some of our students are 16 and older. There will be an opportunity for vaccinations in the next couple of weeks. Can you just kind of let us know what you've heard about specifically vaccinating 16, 18-year-olds? Any thoughts or concerns?
You know, just as with the adults, I don't think their, their problems with the vaccine have been any different. I think their immunity has been better. And even more recently, with the Pfizer vaccine going down to age 12, they find that they have a better response to the vaccine than the older and elderly crowd. So it's still very much recommended that everyone be vaccinated. And I think for at least the Pfizer vaccine and probably the others, we will at least go to 12 and probably even lower, possibly five years old.
Kelly, do you have any updates from today in terms of the elementary schools? How they did, some of your nursing staff, if they saw anything of note today?
I did notice from some of the nurses that parents were calling in to say that their children have been exposed to positive individuals. I did look at the month of March and we had 27 students that were positive, but 11 were remote and four were staff members. So today, we're, I want to commend the parents because they are calling the nurses or emailing their principals and letting us know if students are being exposed to positive individuals or if they have, you know, a positive COVID themselves. So this is great because we have a jump on it. You know, I don't, I don't see too much difference today, just, you know, parents calling in. Which is wonderful.
Consistent, right Kelly?
Yes, yes.
We've seen.
I'd say 95% comes from parents, which is wonderful, because then we can, you know, a lot of times we don't have close contacts because we know so quickly and the kids are getting out of school.
Yeah, Kelly, can you, can you share with us and those that are watching what you would respond to those parents when they call and say, my child has been exposed to someone who has a positive, positive test result? What are you telling them?
And so we're telling that, you know, we're asking them, does your child have any symptoms? Have they been exposed to somebody in the household that's positive? A lot of times it's, they've been exposed to a, a family member, but not in the household. We're telling them, you know, that their child needs to stay home. We're telling them the amount of time that they need to stay out and when they should get tested. A lot of people react and they say, oh, I'm going to get tested, but it's too early. You really have to be exposed to somebody for five or more days to have symptoms. So sometimes people just say, oh, I'm going to get tested. I need to know. But they just have to realize that it's, it's probably too early. So we tell them when they should test. You know, we talk about who in the household is positive, who has been tested, because if you have a positive in your household, then anyone else that lives in the household has to wait till that person comes out of isolation before they, that next person in the household starts quarantining. So when it goes through households, it could be a long time. Unless you can isolate, you have a separate bathroom, a separate bedroom, you know, you're not mingling with the other household members, but that's not a luxury for everybody.
Right. So is it, is it a fair statement to say, or the protocol would be still 15 minutes within a 24-hour period within six feet? Is that what we're calling a direct contact?
Yes, they have not changed the definition of a close contact, so.
Even masks?
Right, even, yes. So it's still the, you know, the 15 minutes cumulative, less than six feet. You know, if you have your masks off, you're eating, that, that opens a different, you know, scenario. But if, you know, if you can say that a child is, you know, within six feet, wearing their mask, keeping their distance, then they're not going to be considered a close contact. Excuse me?
Go ahead. I didn't mean to interrupt.
We're telling, we're telling parents that as soon as your kids are symptomatic, you should get them tested. But when they're in close contact and they don't have symptoms, we want them to wait five days, get tested on day six.
Okay. That was my question. Any other questions for health team?
Man, I think one of the big things that even though we are turning a corner, we still have to remain vigilant and do that daily self-evaluation for symptoms, as Kelly was saying, you know, if a child or a student presents with some symptoms, alert the school and at that point go get tested. I think that's important. And I think our families have been fantastic in doing that. Kelly was just.
They really have. They really have.
Dr. Clark, do you mind just running through those symptoms that we should be looking out for?
Sure. Headache, fever, that's over 100.5. Sore throat, cough, nasal congestion, loss of taste, loss of smell, and extreme fatigue.
Okay. How'd she do, Kelly? Did she get them all?
I think so, yeah.
I knew she did. Okay, well, anything else from the committee?
I just want to check on the health rooms. So are we still feeling comfortable with how the health rooms are set up, given now that we have more elementary school students back in the building? That staffing is, is appropriate for that as of right now? And are there any, are there any concerns around how those are being managed at this point in time?
No, actually, the nurses reach out to me, you know, if they're dealing with a lot of COVID questions, follow-up. I have, we have hired four brand-new per diem nurses. They're very young, they're very energetic. They give me their schedules, I put it on the per diem list and we call them as, as needed. So if I can call in a per diem nurse to cover this, the health room while the school nurse follows up on phone calls, that's going to be, you know, very smooth. The other thing is I do have a grant, the CSHS grant from DPH, and I actually hired a nurse to be a liaison between the school and the Department of, you know, the Board of Health in East Long Meadow. So she's going to be on board, she knows how to do contact tracing. She is going to help the nurses navigate through this so that they can run their health rooms and do everything they need to regarding COVID and close contact and calling parents and following up. So I think we're in a very good situation.
Absolutely. That's terrific. I think it just helps, like Corinna mentioned about communication, that we're all kind of working collectively to ensure that communication is really strong and that we're getting on information to great people's hands at the right time. So thank you for going through the process of hiring those individuals to help support that.
Thank you.
Okay, if there's nothing more from the committee. I want to thank you both again for, for your time this evening and your knowledge. And as we move forward every day, it seems like we're making small improvements and certainly appreciate both of your efforts as we move forward. So thank you for chiming in tonight.
Hey, thank you for having us. Bye. Have a good night. Yeah.
Okay, good discussion. And now we will move along to 5.1.2, East Long Meadow High School Expansion of Spectators, a loud athletic contest.
Mr. McGee in the audience, he can raise his hand, we can pull him in.
Hey Kevin.
Hello. How's everybody doing?
Doing well. How you doing?
Good, good.
What are we looking to do tonight?
So can I possibly share my screen? It says. All right, so I'm going to be talking about the spectator policy. So the current policy that we're enforcing is two adult spectators per home team participant plus two siblings and zero visiting spectators. About 10 days ago, the MIAA and the EEA updated the spectator guidelines for the state. So the updated guidelines are the cap of two adults and two sibling participants attending has been lifted. However, capacity guidelines must be followed and the expectation of six feet social distance and wearing masks remains. So I was in communication with our, with Amy Petrosky to make sure that we were interpreting this correct. And at the stadium field, the key thing is we need to make sure that spectators socially distance six feet and that they're wearing masks. And if we're able to do that, then, then we can have more spectators at athletic events. So the PVIC athletic directors recently met to discuss this and the PVIC has decided to leave it up to each individual school district to determine the policy that they want to set regarding home and visiting fans. Furthermore, it is expected that six feet social distance between family units and wearing of masks will occur by all spectators. So when I went out to the stadium, the spacing out there, on the home side bleachers, there's 42 designated markers with red tape. And on the visiting bleachers, there's about 16 designated areas. And each area, you can fit anywhere from one to four family members in that small grid. And then there's approximately 145 socially-distanced fence posts around the outside of the track. So spectators could potentially be encouraged to bring folding chairs if they didn't have a seat in the bleachers, if they didn't want to stand for the entire game. But there is room for a lot of spectators in the bleachers. Again, the 42 and 16 designated areas, and each area would hold approximately one to four family members in that spot. The roster sizes currently that we're focusing on are for football and track, so that's the season that we're doing right now. And the limits are 45 participants for each team, plus we have approximately 13 cheerleaders at home games. And there's similar participant numbers for track meets. So my recommendation for this current season for football and track would be to increase the home team spectators to approximately four total spectator passes distributed to each participant. These passes should be used by family members or close family friends. Siblings attending the game would be required to have a pass and the home team fans would utilize the home side bleachers and the fence posts. And then for the visiting team, I would recommend two total spectator passes distributed to each away team participant to be used by the participant's family members. The visiting team's athletic director will provide a list of the family members that will be attending and the visiting team fans would utilize the visiting side bleachers and the fence posts. So if all of those spectator passes were used, we could potentially have approximately 300 spectators at a football game or at a track meet. I'm confident that we can socially distance 300 spectators outdoors at the stadium. But the important thing is that the spectators are compliant with the socially-distanced aspect. There would be signs up, there would be communications sent out ahead of time to all families about the expectations. And there would also be event staff making sure that we were spreading out. I did review this with Amy Petrosky and again, she was supportive of it. And one thing I would like to point out is it would be a good opportunity to see how football and track goes. And I would anticipate having a new proposal for spring sports where we can hopefully have a set number of student spectators, so we can have a student section that is socially-distanced. We could have home fans, visiting fans, but that would be something that I would recommend or propose in about a month or so to see how it goes with football and track first.
Yeah, and also in that consideration, Kevin, all the sports in the spring will not necessarily be in the stadium too. So you still see that expectation a possibility? Or we'll talk about it when we get there?
Yeah, I, I think every sport will be a little bit different. And one of the main reasons why I would look at the spring sports differently is a lacrosse roster would be limited to about 20 participants compared to football rosters where there's 45. So I feel like we can have a certain, I can propose a certain guideline for inside the stadium and then a different guideline for if we're out at the baseball field or the side grass fields, depending on that space. So I do anticipate having a new proposal to send out in about a month for spring sports.
In your proposal for, for this expanded season now, you said four home fans per participant should be family members. That's pretty much what it is now. Is that correct?
Correct. So currently it's two adults plus two siblings. So it's approximately the same that it is right now. It would be expanding it for families so they have four passes to use any way that they want for family members. And it would also allow two visiting spectators. Our football parents were able to go view their kids play over at Agawam last Friday and they recently changed their policy to allow two parents to come watch their kids play. And I know our football parents were really appreciative about the opportunity to see them play.
So as we move forward with this and other districts are changing, and as a, as a parent who has an athlete, are we conveying to now visiting parents, East Long Meadow visiting parents of another district, that they can now go to say Agawam Stadium because they've changed or West Springfield?
Yes, so it is district by district. So what happened with the Agawam game was their athletic director contacted me in advance. I used our family ID registrations. I reached out to all of our football participants and the coach, and I sent out that list. And any parents that wanted to make changes to the spectators that were going to be using those two spots emailed me and then I sent the final list to the Agawam Athletic Director on Thursday. And then he used that list for the Friday game. So there is going to be a lot of communication between athletic directors. Currently though, there's, there's not many schools that are going to be allowing visiting fans. So I know Agawam is, I know West Springfield is, but there's still a lot of schools that are not allowing visiting fans.
Yeah, I mean, in all reality, and I know you've seen it, the visiting fans come and stand outside of our fence. And I, I don't see the need personally to do that. If we have the space to socially distance, let's, you know, let's let them in as you proposed. So I'd like the proposal.
Yeah, I do too, because I see this as a, you know, if you're going to enforce social distancing, it's easier to do it inside than outside. Because to your point, if the visitors are standing around, there's probably not any social distancing taking place. So if this is an option, let's take advantage of it.
Yeah, and Kevin, are we going to be reminding spectators probably throughout over the intercom and such, you know, social distance, mask-wearing a couple of times during the bench? Is that the strategy?
Yes, after each quarter, we'll definitely communicate with, in football, there'll be signs posted as they enter. There'll be communications sent out to them in advance. And there'll also be event staff that are monitoring the site and just reminding spectators what the expectations are. And I think that's going to be the key for spring sports. If, if the events go well, a good example is this Friday, we're hosting Minnetog. There's probably going to be 250 to 300 people inside the stadium. So I'm hoping that there's compliance and there's, that people will follow those expectations. And I'm hoping for a positive event. And it'll be a good test run so that we can have another proposal for spring sports.
Would we still be offering the option for families to be able to view this remotely? I know we were live streaming some of the games, would that still remain an option, even if in the event that we're opening up to more fans?
Yep. So LCAT is still planning on doing the live streaming inside the stadium. So we would still live stream those games inside the stadium.
And to your point, we're talking about compliance within the stadium. Have you seen a need or do you foresee a need to have some of that staffing come into the parking lots and thinking about, not only are we trying to keep folks socially-distanced potentially within the stadium itself, but then also now you're talking about a lot more vehicles and the potential for other concerns or lingering in the parking lot? Like, are we prepared for something like that as we kind of increase the numbers so quickly?
Yep. So we will have two police officers at the home game on Friday. So they're excellent with being a presence and also going out to the parking lot before and after games. So that, as far as the football games go with the police department, I'm very confident that the parking lot will be well-supervised. Typically for spring sports, when we get to that point, it's rare for us to have over 200 fans. So I do think that our next two home football games, Minnetog and Long Meadow, with the police department being visible and being active, I think, I think it'll be, I think the parents are really going to be, and the fans are just going to be happy to see the game. And I think we'll, we'll be able to monitor them and I think it'll be a positive experience.
I just think it's amazing to hear how much collaboration is going on between so many departments. And when we think back to the conversation we just had with Kelly and Dr. Clark, and now we're talking tonight with you, Mr. McGee, and thinking about how, how much commitment and how much collaboration is going into ensuring that students are getting the most out of what has been a difficult year. So to be able to know that the police department is there and staff is there, communication from families, the nurses, everything, and LCAT support. I just think it, it speaks to how everyone really wants to do right by kids. And I thank you for, for making those efforts, because the kids want to have a season. So thank you for that.
Definitely. Thank you.
I have a question too. So do each of the students' families have a designated spot? Or how does that get distributed?
Yep. So they don't have a designated spot, but they do get designated spectator passes. So they, our football families currently have two spectator passes. They'll get a third and a fourth. The spots in the bleachers are labeled with red tape and they'll have the option of sitting in the bleachers. They'll have the option of sitting at fence posts. They'll have the options of bringing chairs to sit near fence posts. There is plenty of room for this number. And I think families will, will go towards the area that they feel the most comfortable with. And the home side bleachers, again, And the home side bleachers again has, has forty-two designated areas and our roster size is around forty football players plus the thirteen cheerleaders. So there will be plenty of space on the home side. The visiting side, I, I'll definitely encourage their athletic director to communicate that some folding chairs or beach chairs would be a potential option. I'm also looking into bringing in more bleachers for that visiting side to give more options in case people forget chairs or they don't want to bring chairs.
Because I was just thinking if it's full and people do show up and if they don't have chairs, then they would have to just watch it from outside.
They can stand along the fence.
Outside.
The small fence.
Oh, okay.
Which is where all the spectators would be anyway.
That's what he was talking about, the fence post.
All right.
Yeah, we, we've had one home football game versus Amherst and a large number of our home fans, because it was only home fans at that game, actually chose to stand during the game. And the bleachers had less people than people that were standing.
Interesting.
I mean, it's kind of always been the case. A lot of people just congregate and stand by the fence and, you know, but I, now it's all different because of COVID, so.
Right. Okay, if there are any other questions, then we, I would entertain a motion to modify our, the spectators allowed at the athletic contests as outlined by Mr. McGee.
Move to approve the recommendation of four home team spectator passes and two visiting team spectator passes for the spring season football and track.
Okay, motion's been made by Bill.
Is it spring season or is it? What's that?
Floating. Floating whatever you call it. Yeah. Okay.
Okay, Kathy, you got that for the floating season? Yep, okay, thank you. Okay, motion has been made by Bill. Second by Antonella. Any other discussion? All in favor, please say aye. Opposed, nay. That motion carries four to zero. And Kevin, you had something else you wanted to just bring forward for tonight?
Yes, so any families that are listening, we're in danger of our boys volleyball season not happening because of not enough participants. So again, if there's any boys volleyball players that want to participate this spring, the family ID registration is open. I've also put announcements in the morning announcements. And then also with softball, those numbers are a little bit low with registrations also. And we're hoping that we'll definitely have a varsity softball team, but I'm concerned about having enough players for a JV softball team. So again, we have, I'm hoping for those registration numbers to go up for boys volleyball and softball. And if they don't, I will most likely be presenting a eighth grade potential request for a waiver at the next meeting, but I want to see how the registrations go in the next week or two.
Is that going to be soon enough? Kevin, we're not meeting until the twenty-sixth, just three weeks out. Is that soon enough or?
The twenty-sixth would be the first day. It would, that would definitely work and the eighth grade waiver is really just an emergency action if we're in danger of not having a season. So I want to avoid that and I'm, I just want to, I'm hoping that more people register. And then as a last resort, we would open it up to eighth graders if we don't have enough people.
Okay, so I'm just saying, if you feel we need that decision sooner, let Mr. Smith know and we could always schedule a, a brief, you know, virtual five-minute meeting somewhere to, to make that happen. If that would help in the logistics of that decision.
Great, sounds good. Thank you.
What are you looking for for numbers before you go, Kevin?
Yep, so boys volleyball currently has six participants registered. I'm hoping for twelve to fifteen. JV softball, I'm sorry, softball currently has twenty-one participants registered, which is plenty for a varsity team. But we're hoping to get that number up over thirty so that we have a strong JV team also.
Okay, thank you. Okay, looking forward to getting out to watch more sports. Appreciate your time tonight, Kevin.
Great, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Kevin.
Thank you. Okay, another sign of some more normalcy. Always good.
We're getting there.
Yeah, we are. And speaking of five point one point three, we just have an update on today. Today's expansion to more in, full in-person learning at the elementary levels.
So today, just as you mentioned, was our first day where we invited all students at the elementary level and families to participate in person and continue with that mode of instruction from now through the end of the school year. And so best way probably to describe the day as a whole was that it was high energy and high excitement. Having visited each of the elementary schools this morning as students were arriving and families were dropping off, you had a lot of excitement with the students and the teachers to just see students coming in more higher numbers than we've seen in the past. We're still working on car line. Our hope is that we'll see more families access bus transportation. We know that some families who actually signed up for the bus may not have taken it this morning. We do have space to add people and so car line and arrival in terms of time, we're hoping this week we improve each day and that generally is the case even with a regular school opening, say, in late August. So that was great to see. Principals are reporting that the day went well. I think staff and possibly students too, because of the excitement that they were feeling were probably tired today. And today definitely was a day for making sure that students understood how we were going to continue to operate and that routines were reviewed and things such as lunch, arrival dismissal, a big item I'm sure on the students' minds was recess. And so each building is opening up more of their fields and equipment and we are working on how we manage that and make sure that we're keeping our students safe. Trying to keep as much as possible, even on the playgrounds, cohorts together. And so all three schools reported that today went very well. You know, we're still working on arrival to make sure that that continues to improve this week. But I say day one was, it was a great success. One of the things along with, you know, our return to sort of more of a normal school day. The last week, we got some good news around state testing. There, even at the state level, they're starting to open up a few things. And I think the commissioner is going to propose to the legislature that we allow our current eleventh graders to not necessarily have to deal with the assessment that, that window's opening, I believe, May third, which is great. Also finally allowing for, because we do have families that have decided and that it totally is within their prerogative to continue to have their students stay remote and they're connecting to our classrooms, continuing through the live streaming. Now we can put together schedules to actually allow them to take the MCAS remotely, which is, well, is huge. I mean, that I know is something that all of our administrators were starting to worry about. How do we do this? How do we set this up? Especially because you want to honor families' decisions to keep their students remote. And so we're thankful that the, that the commissioner is looking at these and going to present these type of modifications to the legislature. And so they've also extended the window to June eleventh. Hopefully we won't need to test all the way up to June eleventh, but we have that option. So that was exciting and I just can't say enough about, and I think this is truly I'll hit on this. The town and the entire ELPS community really has done an exceptional job. Our staff has been incredible in adjusting and learning new things. And it really wouldn't be as successful without all of that coming together. So, you know, I want to thank our families. I want to thank our staff because they're exceptional. And I want to thank our administrators because they're consistently revising and looking to make sure that we have strategies and protocols that make sense and keep people safe. And you heard it actually from Mr. McGee, just what they're doing out in the stadium. And so we're excited. We're excited to have our students back. We're preparing, final preparation for Monday, the twelfth, when we see grades six through twelve do the same thing. And then we're hoping that the rest of our spring sort of has that feel of returning a little bit to normalcy.
Yeah, just to reiterate, I, you know, I mentioned turning that corner and feeling a little bit more normalcy. We're still following procedures. We still have a long way to go. Social distancing, masking fully, six feet if unmasked, so everybody's on board with that. Still a little ways to go, but we're on our way, so.
I can say too, we, our daughter took, took the bus and our son took the bus today and, and really watching the precautions go into place on, on the bus was terrific. I mean, the seats were labeled and kids were welcomed and greeted. You know, we have a kindergartner, so watching her get on the bus for the first time in a very unique situation, she was confident and comfortable and kind of ready to take on that challenge. So I think it was, was terrific and speaks to that same type of collaboration with, with the collaborative around busing and around ensuring that all the mitigation processes are, are being held regardless of whether it's transportation or in the classrooms or at recess. So I think that that's a huge testament to the work that's gone in in terms of preparing our, our district as a whole to continue to welcome more students back. So I think it was, it was a pleasure to see this morning and, and the bus, like I said, I, I really couldn't speak, speak enough about it. It was early, so it was, it was a good sign.
Yeah, it's, it's impressive to take a look at any of the arrival structures that are put in place at the elementary school. But probably the most heartwarming is, is watching kindergartners get off and how excited they are. And again, our staff is right there. We had a number of staff members designated to greet our kindergartners and get them to the right place. And so it was fantastic.
Well, it doesn't, it, it catches you off guard because you forget some of the things that they haven't done. So, you know, like I mentioned, our, our kindergartner, she hadn't met her full class yet. So being able to meet kids today that she's only seen on a screen so far, she was excited because she recognized the fact that they were all going to be in the room at the same time. So that was definitely a celebration this afternoon in our house. So it was exciting to see.
Great. And on the twelfth, April twelfth, grade six through twelve will get their opportunity for more in-person learning. So I'm looking forward to that as well. Okay, any other questions, comments on that? Have the tents showed up yet?
So we do have tents up at some of the schools and we're working with the other ones. We have them all ordered. I think we have them reserved. It's now, it's a question of getting them up.
Okay, good.
Making sure that they're able to use it. I think snack is going to be outside, so the tents will be a, a nice item to have.
Well, I did see a picture, I think it was on Twitter this afternoon of a kindergarten, I think it was, it was a class outside. I think they were having snack. They were six feet, they were socially distanced. They were in a, on the playground and everybody was, it looked like everybody was comfortable. So I mean, kudos to everybody for pulling this off because the.
Looks like it's going to be around sixty.
Yeah, I know. The weather, the weather. Definitely.
And Pam, to, to Bill's question, two of the elementaries don't have tents yet, but they have them scheduled to come shortly. Is that correct? So anyone's can look for those soon?
That is correct. One of the schools has them up. They requested them up for today. And the other ones was, the plan was to have them up during school vacation week. So when the kids come back after vacation, they're, they're going to be up at the schools.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, if that's it for this subject, we will move on. We have the one eight foundation grant for Open Science and Ed, Science Education in Massachusetts program at Burchland Park. Is this Amy?
So this is, I think you have Dr. Allen, Ami Singh and Kathy Morse in the audience. This is really exciting. This is a group put together for a grant application and competitive grant and they'll be able to tell you more about it.
Do you want to start us off, Dr. Allen?
Hi, everyone. How we doing?
Doing well. How you doing?
Good. Yeah, so we are thrilled to announce to you that we've been awarded an Open SciEd school grants at Burchland Park to really revamp and improve our science instruction from grade six to eight. This is a grant that actually came about pretty quickly for us. There were a lot of schools that were in the pilot with this curriculum. This is a curriculum that has been pretty much deemed by DESI as the best curriculum to line up with the new Massachusetts standards and the new innovative science assessment that they are working on creating. So at Burchland, we are one of the pilot schools for the Innovative Science Assessment. So this spring, our students will be taking the regular Science MCAS, but they'll also be taking the new Innovative Science Assessment. Ami Singh and Kathy Morse, my eighth grade teachers, are on this call. I'll turn it over to them in a minute. But they have really been driving me forward in my scientific instructional thinking. And they, I'm so proud in this crazy, crazy year. They are both on different statewide boards connected to the Innovative Science Assessment. So not only are they piloting it, and we've actually had students at our school already take this new MCAS Science Assessment one-on-one with a, with an individual from the testing company so that they actually think out loud and they, the, the, the adult can like ask them questions as they think through and take the assessment. So we've had one-on-one tests already and we're going to have a larger group test later. But anyways, in this crazy year, both Ami and Kathy have sat on statewide boards helping to create this assessment, helping to make sure the assessment is equitable. So really proud of that. And then on top of that, they also signed up and went to, I noticed my hair is even more so than normal. Whatever, it's, it's April. At this point, they signed up and went to trainings this past fall in conjunction with Open SciEd and they'll tell you more about that. But at those trainings, they really learned about, a lot about this curriculum and, you know, sort of came back, sort of started talking to me about it. I started talking to Heather Brown about it. And we got our name into the hat really late for this grants. Now, Open SciEd is an open curriculum, so you can actually go online and you can see the entire curriculum. They're meant to be an open resource. However, to do it and to do it well, there are a lot of materials you need and there's a lot of training you need. It's, it's an incredible curriculum that's broken down into units. In every unit, the students have to make sense of a problem or a phenomenon. And all of the units are set up as storylines. So the students actually learn through a story. And what happens is what it's really meant to do is to not give students scientific learning, but to have them arrive at scientific learning. And the way it's set up within the story, they arrive at just little pieces at a time. And then it's all based on coherence. So the, the storyline has a coherence that as they, they learn all these little pieces, they lead to new questions, which lead to new learning, which needs new questions, which leads to new learning. And then eventually it just sort of falls into place with the full picture. So we went for this grant schoolwide. My science department, my other teachers as well, said, yeah, let's go for it. We've been using Amplify Science. We've had a lot of success with that in sixth grade, but we have found a lot of holes in it in our seventh and eighth especially. So we decided to go for this grant and try something totally new, knowing that DESI is really on board with this and knowing that means obviously that it would be a good thing for us to be aligned with. And, and we got it. The grant is worth right around thirty-five thousand dollars. It gives us all sorts of training starting this June to implement these units as well as all sorts of materials that'll make it a lot easier to do. So that's about as much as I can say and I, I guess I'll start by turning it over to Kathy Morse first and then Ami Singh. Maybe you guys can add on a little bit and of course, we'd love to take any questions that you all have as well.
Yeah, thanks, Tim. Tim pretty much said everything that we were going to say. I have been on the Innovative Science Assessment Committee and I've put thirty hours in with this state committee throughout this school year. And what we've been doing as teachers, we're not developing the questions. We're literally nitpicking them apart to make sure that the science is accurate, that students would understand the wording, that pictures, you know, kind of go with whatever they're supposed to be modeling. So we, we literally just every time we meet, we just go over it and over it. They make adjustments. We look at it again. And we're trying to refine the questions. And we're trying to refine the questions. The training that Tim mentioned about the SciEd was actually DESI putting it on. It was four sessions where they were kind of piloting SciEd. And we were the students and they were just demonstrating it. So we got a good idea as to how you would go about using it. And if you are teaching through SciEd, you are really setting your students up to be successful with the new Science Innovative Assessment, which is supposed to be in place within three years. So, you know, I think it's a great opportunity. And Ami?
Hi. So I'm, the board that I'm sitting on, we are taking a look at equity and access for students within, for the Innovative Science Assessment, which aligns with what we've been doing as a district around questions of anti-bias, anti-racist teaching. So that was great to be able to see how that would reflect on how DESI is looking at that whole question and making sure that there's access and equitable questions in the new Innovative Science Assessment. One of the things that, that, one of the shifts that we see happening by being on these boards is the shift from knowledge, just regurgitating knowledge, which is what the MCAS had been about before, to a focus on science as inquiry. And that's what this new, the Open SciEd curriculum does, is it make sure that the students see science as something that's real in their lives and so making it more meaningful. And hopefully, this kind of curriculum helps us to train, to introduce our students into a life of inquiry and a lifelong learning. Because that's actually, that's what science education is, is to continue that curiosity and that love of learning that you see in a kindergartner when they're first coming to school, as some of you had talked about today, that excitement and that drive to learn and that drive to ask questions. That's been stifled for a while, but I think DESI has realized that that focus on inquiry and that focus on creativity and questioning is actually what science is about. So we're excited to bring that kind of energy and then that kind of enthusiasm back into the science classroom to make it much more relevant to our students. The problem's going to be that, one of the things that this grant is helping us with is that we as teachers then need to be able to match that that inquiry with knowledge. And that's what this grant gives us. Any questions? Back to Tim.
So I think that's a great summary. I can't say enough, school committee, about the work my entire science department's been doing. But especially Kathy and Ami sitting on these state committees, really diving into this headfirst and not sort of just saying, ah, it's a crazy year. I got enough to do. And we were thrilled to be able to put together with a lot of guidance from Heather Brown, of course, a successful grant. So what happens now is, the first step is this June, all of our science teachers get what's called the four-day foundational professional development. That's where they learn the foundation of Open SciEd and how to implement units. And then they also learn how to do the first unit. And the way this works is there are about six units per grade level. But throughout the grant, and this is in conjunction with the curriculum, basically, we roll out two units per year in each grade. So you get really good, you dive very deep in the first year on one or two units. And then you still have to use other curricular resources for the rest of your curriculum. Because there's so much depth to the units and such a change in how you have to instruct that they say we have to go slow. We have to do this over three years. You can't just dive into six new units. So it'll be a four-day training for our teachers in June. And then it'll be a two-day training in January where they'll learn about unit number two and how to implement that. So we're thrilled. I'm proud of my department. It's a hard year to get other stuff done. And my science department is getting a lot of other stuff done. So I could not be more proud.
Questions from the committee?
No, I think it's terrific that we're continuing to engage students and being able to obtain those 21st century skills that we know that our economy and our world demands. So I think it's terrific that you were able to pursue this grant, like you mentioned, Tim, in such an uncertain year and that your educators work for the challenge of being able to pursue this and to continue to grow themselves as professionals by sitting on those boards. I think my question is really, based on how this kind of goes, will there be opportunities for either the elementary schools to possibly come and see one of these units being taught? Or possibly the high school to see? Because if there's possibilities for future grants, how terrific might it be to have that cohesive phenomena-based science science-type class be a part of all the science experiences that our students in East Almetto have?
Yeah, so it's not, that's not something that's built in, but that's certainly something we're open to. Our classrooms, especially my science rooms, are always open for sharing and for connection. So I would work with Mr. Fredette, Ms. Antonello, even Mr. Page. I could even work with Mr. Page anytime. So I think that's a great idea. And as we dive into these, yeah. I mean, once we have these up and going well, they certainly could be something that helps, that we can push in both directions, at least in terms of the phenomena-based learning.
It looks like high school is the next place that they're headed. So that would be a great connection to make.
Yeah, absolutely.
I'll suggest that a year or so ago, both Kathy and I have actually, that, looking at the connection to elementary, Kathy and I had both visited a fifth-grade classroom. She went to Maple Shade. I went to Mountain View to take a look at, to talk to the teachers, to see how we can better connect and better align. And actually, one of the testers for the one-to-one testing is a fifth grader within our district. So we had an eighth grader, at least one eighth grader did the one-on-one testing and at least one, and I know one fifth grader who did the one-on-one testing. So that would be kind of exciting to see if we can do that, to do that kind of longitudinally across K-12.
Amazing. Thank you. Thank you for doing that already and being open to the idea of doing it further as we move forward with this.
Other comments, questions from the committee?
Good starting point.
Yeah. Kathy and Ami, certainly appreciate you both stepping up to be part of a state committee and representing East Almetto. I think a new focus on science is a timely thing. And certainly we appreciate your efforts in this and look forward, if you would, to potentially coming back with some updates on how well it's going and your progress.
Thank you.
Absolutely. That would be great. Thank you.
And did the awards come out this week? Tim, is the Future City Awards announcement this week?
Yes, the ceremony, there's a virtual ceremony this Wednesday afternoon.
Well, good luck. Hopefully we.
Yeah, thank you. Yeah, it's from 1:00 to 2:30. So I will update you guys afterwards for sure. But we're very proud of that group. Just another one of those things, like how did you get that done in this year? So.
Well, best of luck.
Good stuff. Good stuff. Thank you.
Pam, do you need a vote to accept the grant or have we done that? We haven't done that yet.
No, I do need you to. I just want to say congratulations to Burchland Park. We're all very proud of you. And yes, if the school committee could please do an official approval to accept the Open SciEd Grant. As Dr. Allen said, it is a three-year grant. The actual amount is $34,800. And that will come in three payments over the three years. Year one, working right now with Don Fonte, the town treasurer, to set up a direct deposit account so we can get those funds in there in the very near future. And that will be $17,400 this year. Second year, year two, is $10,440. And the final year, year three, $6,960, again for that grand total of $34,800.
Pam, is that going into a separate revolving fund or where is that going to end up?
This is going to go in its own grant fund. I had to create a separate account for it. So I'm just waiting for the final approval to set that up in Munis, our software. And like I said, I'm working with the town treasurer on setting up a direct deposit account with this Open SciEd grant, so we can get those funds.
And those funds would be able to roll over from year to year if.
Yes, it's a, yes. So we'll get the funds each year and it will stay in that one account.
Okay. Okay, I entertain a motion to accept the grant in the amount of $34,800. Move to approve the Open SciEd Grant in the amount of $34,800. Okay, motion made by Bill.
Second.
Second by Antonella. Any discussion? Hearing none, all the favorites say aye. 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 Those opposed, nay. That motion carries four to zero. I want to thank you all so much for attending tonight and congratulations on all your efforts and hard work for our students and look forward to hearing your progress.
Thank you. Thank you very much. And have you ever seen a more authentic smile than Pam Blair when we get a grant? I love it.
Very sincere.
I love it. Thank you very much. Thank you Kathy and Ami for joining us.
Thank you, yes.
Thanks, everybody.
Okay, good stuff. Progress here in East Almetto. That's good stuff to hear. Okay, and Pam, we have one more gift donation.
We do. So in your packet is a request from Frank Page, the high school principal, for the school committee to accept a $200 donation from Christopher and Mary St. George for the High School Beautification Program. These funds will be deposited into the high school gift account to be expended for this purpose.
Pam, do we know what that date is of the beautification? Isn't that, it's a set date they're acting on this, you know?
I think that they've been working on it. I feel like in Mr. Page's newsletters. Do you know more about that, Mr. Smith?
I think it's ongoing. Looking for a few items. This, I think, will close out what they need.
Okay. All right, if someone would like to make a motion, please.
Move to approve the gift donation in the amount of $200 for the East Almetto High School Campus Beautification Program.
You guys got to be quicker.
Yeah. He's the motion maker.
I'll take a second.
Second.
Second by Antonella. Motion made by Bill, second by Antonella. Any other discussion? Hearing none, all the favorites say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. That motion carries four to zero. Okay, with that, we have come to the conclusion of our meeting. Again, look forward to more in-person learning as we move forward. Our next meeting will be on the 26th. We'll have the leadership team here or at least invite them for an update. And keep moving forward.
One of the impressive things, you know, Dr. Allen said it a number of times, is that our staff isn't just looking to get by. You know, they're getting out and being innovative and we are becoming leaders in the state. So that's just a real credit to all of our staff.
Yes, it is. Good stuff. Okay, good meeting. So with that, I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
No move.
See you, Bill. I even gave him the.
No, that's fine. Motion made by Bill. You got to be quick. You got to be quick. Second by Antonella. Any other discussion, hearing none, all the favorites, please say aye. Aye. Those opposed, nay. Motion carries four to zero. Thank you so much and have a good night.